Thank you for joining us this evening. We are beginning our evening with a special meeting of the Campbell City Council. To protect our constituents, city officials and city staff and the city, the city reminds all those in attendance that physical distancing and face covering are required. I'm going to call the meeting to order and then have a roll call and have an opportunity for public comment. It's on an item not on the agenda and that's still okay, okay? And then after that, we will adjourn the meeting until 6:30 to pick up the discussion of unfinished business. So the schedule's changed a little bit. All right. Yes.
Mayor Gibbons, just so the city council is clear, you do not have to entertain matters that are not on a special meeting agenda. You can, if you wish, but you're not required to do so.
Thank you. We'd like to do so because the speaker has been here before and been unable to participate. So I think as a courtesy, we will do that. Okay? Thank you. So I call to order this special meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. This special city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. This city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee? Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Mayor Gibbons?
Present. Thank you. At this portion of the meeting, we have an opportunity for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Do we have anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Please come forward. And if you be kind enough, be sure to speak directly into the mic and as close as you're comfortable.
Sure, is this good?
And that's good, thank you. And your name and address for the record, if you so choose.
Sure. My name is Zubin Kara. My address is 971 Dry Creek Road.
Please.
All right. Hello, city council members, and thank you for your time. I'm currently working on a school project that seeks to better understand the homelessness crisis here in Bay Area, and more specifically in my own community, the city of Campbell. I began my search for information by finding the city of Campbell's own website where I found all the homeless services offered. When I opened the page, I was surprised to find that there were only four links posted to organizations all located outside of Campbell. After contacting each of these organizations through emails and calls during the work hours multiple times, I was dismayed to find that none of them had responded. According to the Santa Clara County Homeless Census from 2019, 76 homeless people reside in Campbell, however, as unemployment rates spiked to 12.2% of the population in April 2020, once the quarantine order had been mandated and the protection of the eviction moratorium had come to end, it can be reasonably inferred that the homelessness rates within the county have increased. As of May 2021, Campbell boasts an impressively low unemployment rating of 4.8%. However, that does not mean that we can neglect the present homelessness crisis that the community faces. The information to aid our unhoused population is lacking, and I'm curious what the city is willing to do about it. What began as a question for how we can help our community's unhoused individuals has become a personal investigation into whether Campbell is providing the bare minimum resources in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you heard, council cannot take any action on anything brought up, but I would encourage you, and others may have further comment, to send your comments to the attention of the city manager. That's brianl@campbellca.gov. And he would be able to follow up with you directly to perhaps answer your questions and see what else we can do to help clarify what the positive steps that Campbell is in fact taking.
Gladly. I plan to do so. Thank you so much.
Can I make a comment? Yes, of course.
I just want to thank you for coming and for bringing this to our attention. And it's great to see young students here engaging with us, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it.
And I'd just like to thank you as well for your very impressive comments tonight and what I'm sure will be a great project for you in the community. And please feel free to also reach out, anyone up here as well. Our information is available online as well.
Of course. I'd be glad to do so.
And come back and tell us what you find out.
I'll do. Yes.
Always good advice. Thank you, Councilwoman Landry. Thank you so much. And at this point, we are going to take a pause in the agenda and we will reconvene at 6:30. Okay? Thank you so much.
When snow begins to rustle and lights begin to glow, I'll be making plans to be with you. When decorations beckon to be hung all over town, making a wonderland anew. When trees appear in windows and streets are filled with cheer, I'll be wrapping presents now it's true. For all that I look forward to is Christmas and being with you. When trees appear in windows and streets are filled with cheer. I'll be wrapping presents now it's true. For all that I look forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvening the special meeting of the Campbell City Council. To protect our constituents, city officials and city staff. The city reminds all those in attendance that physical distancing and face coverings are required. We are, uh, should we do a roll call again? Okay, may we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Here.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here, thank you so much.
And we will, um. Thank you. All right, we will get used to this system sooner or later. We are now at the portion of the meeting, item number one, under unfinished business. This is a can, to consider extension of the downtown Campbell Parklet program. This would be a resolution and a roll call vote. Did everyone receive the agenda attachment? Yeah, the resolution, okay, everybody got that? Okay. Uh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, here it is. Can I give you just a moment? And ask council members have an opportunity to review the material. This is a recommended action that the city council consider adoption of a resolution extending the downtown Campbell Parklet program for outdoor restaurant dining and business operations in parklets. And we have a presentation or discussion led by the city manager, Brian Movenfall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This items before you, as a follow up to several discussions we've had as the staff report. I'm sorry, the resolution that was given indicates this discussion first started in September of 2020, establishing the Parklet program downtown. And during various times during 2021, the council extended that program, most recently a discussion on September 7th of the council that's indicated that discussion by resolution 1272, 12758, that extended the Parklet program until January 3rd, 2002, in which the, at that date, the program was intended to terminate. Since that time, there has been continued COVID cases. Obviously, the Omicron variant is prevalent now. And because of concerns and those considerations, this items before the council to consider whether or not to extend the program further. Now, we have provided a draft of a resolution that sets forth the framework to do so if the council chooses to do that. No action tonight would leave in place a previously adopted resolution. So if the council wants to do something differently, then terminate this program January 3rd, it would take some action. The council, the resolution that I provided you has several blanks in it. Those blanks are to fill in the date if it is extended by the council. If the council could at least build a consensus on what that date would be, we would fill that in in the resolution for your adoption.
So may I ask a clarification? I may have misunderstood you. Did you say that to have the status of the council's previous action go forward? We have to take action tonight or take no action?
No action would leave the council's previous resolution in place, which would terminate the program January 3rd. So if you want to change that, you need to take action this evening.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. With that, the council can ask questions. We can have an opportunity to then go to public comment and come back for discussion. Council questions? Councilmember Bybee?
Yeah, I'd like to start off by asking, why is this item being agendized? I don't understand.
So I'll answer that. On, over the weekend, well, actually for the last three weeks, I've been receiving, I think perhaps other councilmen have requests from downtown businesses to have the parklets extended. I responded to everyone saying that the decision was made by council in October and September, October, and that the decision was to have them ended on January 3rd. At this past weekend, when information about Omicron became more concerning, more rapidly spreading. And I did receive yet another request from another business. I asked, sent an email to the vice mayor and to the city manager asking their thoughts on whether we should have a special council meeting to reconsider the parklet closure on January 3rd. It seemed that we've all worked, the businesses have all worked so hard for two years to stay viable, that would it be possible to extend the parklets? I did check with the chamber to see if the, there would be an impact on the farmer's market. The feedback I received at the time, informal of course, was that it probably could be worked, worked out. So not a long-term issue at this point. So I asked the city manager to contact council members to see if it made sense to have a discussion on this topic. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. When this was first done, that we would end on January 3rd, there was a staff comment that they would come back in December with a program of either we keep them and or make them permanent, what that would look like. That we didn't get that. So now, if depending on what happens tonight, when and if that would come back? Is this something that would come back in January, February, March?
Yeah, thank you. It's scheduled right now for January 18th, that discussion on permanent parklets. Staff's prepared to present that on January 18th.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just to clarify and follow up on that, but really, January 18th is today, a discussion of permanent parklets. This would come back to us whenever we set the end date, is that correct? Or some period before the end date?
Well, I, the idea that in September, as we set an end date, doesn't come back to you, that's the end date. If you want to set an end date and reconsider, then I want that direction from the council this evening.
Okay.
But regardless of what the council's action are, we are intended to come forward with an item January 18th to discuss permanent parklet.
And one last question, on the January 18th item, can that item address, let me say, instead of addressing permanent parklets, address parklets? Because it, because it's, just to clarify, it seems to me there could be permanent parklets, there could be temporary, which then have to have some, let's not keep doing this. Or there could be, we don't want any. But I mean, I think it's a broader discussion because I'll discuss it more when we get into comments, but that could be the broad discussion that just settles, sets a policy, permanent, temporary or none.
Yeah, based on council's discussion and direction this evening, we could certainly broaden that discussion.
Okay, so I just don't want to limit it and bill, it doesn't limit it, I don't want to limit it to permanent, I want to broaden the discussion. And I don't know if that means the agenda will change a little bit, but that's, that's my intent is to broaden it.
Yeah, it would, and I'd take that direction from the council if that's of interest tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we will close the topic and open, or close the questions and open the opportunity for public comment. We usually take comment from members of the audience first, and then we go to the, what do you call it, Zoom meeting list? And do we have speakers on the Zoom meeting list?
I have one member of the public online with us.
I'm sorry, I can't understand.
I have one member of the public online with us.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? So please come forward if you would, speak at the microphone. Speak as close as you can directly into the microphone and state your name and address for the record if you wish, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Randy Buster, 2645, Kirk, New York. Court, Campbell, California, 95008. I'm the owner of Sushi Confidential in downtown Campbell. Thank you, Mayor Gibbons, Vice Mayor Resnikoff and the rest of the city council. I am support to extend the temporary parklet program for the next 30, 60 or 90 days. As you know, we are coming up on our second full year of COVID. We're not out of the pandemic yet, like we thought we would have been at this time. And the winter is potentially going to be worse with everything we're hearing. I think the timing to remove the parklets is too soon. Being on the front lines every single day, speaking with our guests and local community members. They appreciate the parklets because it provides them with safe outdoor dining. And just keep in mind, not every single person has the ability to get a vaccine. So they choose to sit outside in the cold to be safe and to support local businesses. We want to convey to the Campbell community that we care about the health and safety for them. And removing the parklets at this time would convey the opposite. Keep in mind, I have businesses in downtown San Jose, and they just extended their parklet program for another year. I'm about to move into Morgan Hill, and they're extending their parklet program as well as designing permanent parklets as well. How things are going to play out with COVID is still unknown. It's unknown for businesses, and it's unknown for the spread of COVID. Additionally, I hope you will consider the formal permanent parklets that we have been talking about over the last few months. Some of the businesses may choose to build those to provide long-term, safe dining environments for our guests. And having been able to extend our current temporary parklet program for 30, 60 or 90 days, and then understanding what the, what the permanent parklets would look like, it would give us a good transition to be able to go from temporary to permanent without a long delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one moment, is there anyone from the council who would have questions for the speaker? We do allow that. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you so much for your comments. I do have a couple of questions that that would be helpful for my understanding.
Sure.
And as we get into winter, have you seen usage of the parklets go up, down, stay the same roughly?
I spend about $400 a week in propane. So I hope that answers your question that people are choosing. Obviously, tonight, no one is sitting in a parklet because it's raining, but we live in California and it doesn't rain that often.
Thank you. And what would be, what in your estimation would be helpful to businesses? Would it be to understand the long-term solution, to have a break in between? You know, if you're looking a little more long-term, what does that look like?
Long-term between the two different types of parklets?
If we're looking, whatever a long-term solution is, is it helpful to, to have a temporary program continue? Or to, you know, have it end and, you know, what would be your process? That's a broad question.
Yes, I, I have, let's say, 25 tables out there and 50 chairs. It's like when you move, if you were to move from one house to another, but the other house wasn't ready, where are you going to put all your stuff? So that's one of the challenges we would have if there was a lull of one month, two months or five months. Where am I going to store all these tables and chairs? And if I get rid of them with the supply chain, I can't even get enough tables and chairs to open up my location in Morgan Hill right now.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions of the speaker? Fine, thank you so much. And if there are no other speakers in the audience, we will go to our Zoom members. And would you assist me with having?
Sure, we have Mr. Ken Johnson on the line on Zoom with us. Ken, there you go, you're unmuted now.
Can you, can you hear me now?
A little bit louder, we'll try and raise your volume.
Can you hear me, is that better?
Yeah, pretty light.
Okay, I'm gonna move my computer. So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I just want to recognize all of you again for your flexibility in working with businesses as we continue to get, to get through this. And what was, what you thought was, what was potentially a great decision about looking at getting, ending in January and then putting something permitted in. I appreciate you being willing to look at it. I went out and spoke to all the restaurants who had parklets. A lot of them were closed yesterday, and the only one that I didn't get a chance to speak to was Vesper because they're closed Monday and Tuesday. And generally, I might ask them all to send their letters in. But the feedback from all them, they appreciate the ability to keep the parklets. And as Randy said, it's helpful for them to not have the down. And so I would say from our standpoint, helping the restaurants continue to, even though we're going to deal with rain and other things, if they're willing to continue to go through till they can, a permanent program can at least be examined. I don't think there's any harm in doing that. And, and we appreciate the opportunity that we've had to continue to give input on that. Because like farmer's market, we're probably most affected by the parklets with, with what we do downtown. So I appreciate your willingness to continue to do what's best for the businesses.
Thank you, Ken. If you'd stay on the line just a moment, I want to make sure that we have any questions. Okay, Councilwoman Landry, then Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Hi, Ken, thanks for calling in. So you said you talked to every parklet restaurant, but not Vesper's, right?
Vesper's wasn't, and Stax closes at 2, so I didn't get down to Stax to talk to them. But everybody else in between, I did.
And they've all said, let's keep the parklets for now. And did you get any sense from them if they're going to go into, if we do do a permanent program, that they would still support that?
I didn't talk at all about a permanent program. I just said that you were having a special meeting tonight to talk about extending the parklet program. And if they were interested in providing input, they should send an email in today.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Hey, Ken, two questions for you. Did you happen to talk to any of the retailers that use parklets?
I did not.
Okay. And also, when is the next scheduled street fair for the Chamber?
May.
In May. So we'll talk about permanent in January, but you coexisted for the, for the last one, right, for Boogie?
Yeah.
Or for Oktoberfest, I guess it was. So that could be done again.
It's, you know, we're willing to continue, we're willing to do whatever we need to do to help the businesses here.
Okay, it seems like, I mean, it seems like you and the farmer's market were flexible and worked around it.
Yeah, I know the farmer's market right now, they're not, as I told the mayor, they're not at 100% occupancy right now. So I think extending is not a problem for them. It is, you know, for us, it's a little different, but we'll deal with that as we continue. Just look at what the permanent one looks like.
Fair enough, thanks.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Ken, for your outreach and your flexibility. It's really appreciated. I know the vice mayor asked about the retailers. I, other than the most, your most recent round of outreach, do you have a sense of how or whether they've continued to be impacted by the program? I know that that question, as we've talked about this issue over several meetings, that, that that question has looked a little bit different in the impact. So I'm wondering what your latest read on that is.
Yeah, I've not had anybody outreach to me with, with any issues about it one way or the other. And so I would, I would just be speaking for myself, and I don't want to do that. I don't own a retail store downtown, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ken, you might be able to answer this, but it may go to the city manager. In October, after council's decision and the need to move the farmer's market downtown, there was a request to kind of consolidate the parklets, and some of the parklets were reduced. I think Sushi Confidential lost a couple of spaces. I think the Celtic Shop lost some spaces. Marie's Besties Boutique lost their parklet. Are there any retail spaces with parklets now? Do you know?
I don't believe there are. I think the only, the only parklets left are with restaurants.
Okay. No, the Celtic one away a long time ago. Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. So I appreciate the help with that clarity. Anyone else have any questions of the speaker? Okay. Thank you so much for participating this evening.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
It was the last one.
Okay, so we have no other speakers and no other speakers here in the audience. We will close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the council. And I will just re-clarify for the benefit of the council members here. It just seemed like things were changing unexpectedly and drastically with the Omni, Omnicron, and that it was appropriate to ask council. That's why I worked through the process to try and bring it for an emergency meeting. I, I do think that, as I said earlier, we've, everyone has worked so hard to keep our businesses up and running. And we never expected to be here. And the forecast for Omnicron is not good. I have family members in Europe, and it's shut down. I have family members on the East Coast, and they are shutting down. So it just seemed like the right thing, and I'm supportive of extending it. I'm open to further discussion on whether it's sixty, ninety days, or what perhaps could be discussed on January eighteenth, as the vice mayor has indicated. We need perhaps a more comprehensive comment or discussion. But I'm supportive of continuing the parklets at this time. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. So let me comment first procedurally, and this doesn't indicate my willingness, my unwillingness to support, because I think, I think I've always tried to do everything we can for the businesses. I just want to agree first with Councilmember Bybee, it's a bad precedent. So just procedurally, I worry that we could be bringing other issues back and not just COVID. I mean, the, the, the problem, if we, if we had a problem, was we decided based on what's then, and now, we didn't have the variant. But we don't know, this is going to happen again and again. I mean, we could have, we could have been fine in January shutting it down. The variant could have hit in February, and we'd be in the same boat. So I guess what I'm going to ask for is that, I guess each of us think, we decide on our worst case or our best case, what do we want to prepare for? I don't want to, I don't want to shut it off and bring it back, that kind of thing. Do we prepare for just the uncertainty of not knowing what's going to happen? And are on the side of that? Had we done that before, then we would have continued and said, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, let's just go to June. So that's, so this is just procedurally to try to avoid it because this could affect other issues as well.
And if I may just, I don't disagree with what you said at all.
Like I say, I don't know if we, I won't say we did wrong, we made a council decision.
We did the best we could.
And we did it based on what was then, and this has proven to us, we have no idea what's going to happen in February. And somewhere out there, there's a sigma variant, some other variant, and we don't know. So I'm just asking us to consider that. And then, again, when we get, and I'll support it. And when we get to January eighteenth, let's broaden the discussion. Because if we do permanent sometime in twenty-two, it doesn't make sense, as Randy said, to have a break in between, right? Because that, that hurts the businesses, but also what does he do with equipment? Let's take it that way. If we decide that we're not doing permanent, we have a decision then, are we ending in ninety days if that's what we do today? Or are we saying, you know what, we don't know what's going to happen in twenty-two, so we're doing it to the end of twenty-two, and that's it? And we don't have to bring it back, or we just want to get rid of it when it expires. So I want to have that discussion on the eighteenth. But if we're going to continue it long-term, and then there should be continuity. I mean, taking it down and putting it up is probably the worst situation. So I'm supportive of helping the businesses. As I say, I don't like the process, but that's a whole different issue. I'm supportive of helping the businesses. I don't see how we do it for less than ninety days. Because if we do it in thirty days, we got to come back, that, there's going to be another vote in January, do we continue it? Even if we go permanent, if we do ninety, we would know before then what the timeframe of permanent is if we're going that way. And then we adjust it to make it continuous, except for some break where they have to remove concrete. So just some thoughts on that. My concerns are more on the eighteenth and how we operate then, and that we just be cognizant when we vote today and then. I mean, I guess, I guess the lesson from COVID is you got to take a worst-case scenario and say, what if? Let's protect them for that. But we, and we may overstate how long they stay, but perhaps that's better than understating them.
And I, as you know, I don't disagree with what you're saying procedurally and so forth. I would like to pick up on what Councilwoman Landry said in her earlier remarks. We all expected to have a discussion on the parklets at the December seventh meeting. We could have had a discussion about this at that point. So in one sense, when we made our discussion in October, I don't think any of us really thought it was a fait accompli because we thought we were going to discuss it again. So we're basically between a rock and a hard place at this point.
And I say lesson learned on COVID-related items, that we don't know what's going to be, nobody knows what's going to be. Nobody thought we'd hit starting year three soon, and we may be en masse this whole year, who knows, right? So let's, let's just consider that in January. But if we're going to do this today, I wouldn't go short of the ninety, because it's going to, it's going to bring us back for a vote before we could possibly know the parameters of a permanent solution if we go permanent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bybee?
So I want to make it perfectly clear that, that I've supported the parklet program since its inception. And I also want to recognize that the parklets were approved as a temporary measure to assist businesses during an unprecedented time of COVID. The current concerns I have are about the process and why this item is brought to the council tonight. And I'm, I feel very strongly about this. We had a very thorough public process in September. We had council discussion deliberation and adopted a resolution that approved the ending of the parklet program as of January third. Suddenly, for reasons that weren't clear to me, and they're still a little murky, in the last twenty-four hours, it appears that an urgency existed in which certain council members felt the previous council action needed to be reevaluated. I believe there's a tremendous lack of transparency with this process, and it's being driven by a few people who are supporting extending the temporary parklets. With just forty, twenty-four hour notice, there was not sufficiently time to adequately inform and provide notice to all parties who may want to provide input on this item. My opinion, in my opinion, it lacks the transparency that is needed and required in which sound public policy decisions are decided. I understand the COVID situation is changing and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. But are we going to react every time there's a new variant that comes, comes online? I've observed an increasing number of people returning to normal activity, traffic's increasing. People are out in public attending social events. I was at two restaurants, in one in downtown and one near on Winchester over the weekend, and they were, the indoor dining was packed. It was standing and waiting room only. So I don't, I don't see the urgency that, that some people are projecting with this new variant that, that's, you know, surfacing. And I just feel that if we're basing our decisions on fear and speculation about the Omicron variant, it shouldn't be driving our decisions. And that's all I have, I'm just very upset about the process. I really am disappointed that it got to this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
I appreciate you.
I appreciate very much our participants tonight who came to speak. And I agree with a lot of what's been set up here and the concerns. I'll add one other concern I had, or I have with the process, which is that absent this meeting tonight, we would have been backed into a decision where at the January meeting, had we decided, and I don't know which way the council would have gone, had we decided on a permanent program, there would have been that gap in between getting rid of the temporary parklets and a potential permanent solution. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of the impact to our businesses about the kind of timeframe that we have, and making sure that things that we offer up as potential solutions are able to meet their needs. And I think there's plenty of room for, for learning and for considering improving the process in the future. So I just wanted to offer that up. I do support extending the program and agree with what, a lot of what's been said about that. I'm so open to hearing any, any other comments on, on timeframe. I think sixty or ninety days could, could make sense, given when we'll next have this discussion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. I concur with Paul and Liz regarding the process, that it was short notice, it was only twenty-four hours. But at the same time, things have changed. Now, Omicron doesn't seem to be as severe, it does seem to be spreading though rapidly. I know my daughter's in New York, and everything for her industry is shut down in the movie industry. So I get that part. So to me, this was a balance of what can we do for the temporary situation to then get into the further discussion of the permanent? And that's why I asked the comment, or made the comment about, we had said that we would get back in December. We did not. So at that point, in retrospect, we should have done something then. Now we're here, where we are, that's in the past. But what I, my fear is, we're going to be rushing for December, January eighteenth. We have a tremendous amount on that agenda. I think it would behoove us to move it to into early February because I also want to have staff address the transition issue. Randy, every other business that has contacted me has purchased heaters, tents, tables, chairs, filled out decks to make things ADA compliant. And the temporary program goes away, they wait three or four months. The permanent program, if we do decide to go that way, would start. What do they do for those three or four months? And where do they put everything? I mean, this is just like moving. Do you bring in a pod? Do you have an alternative location? And I think in the staff coming back to us should be addressing that. And that way, businesses have a game plan with the city. If they go permanent, I'm not going to get rid of my tables, but I know I have to rent a pod to keep them. Or can the city have a place to store things? Not that I think we have any, but so to me, it's not just, are we going to go permanent and the design standards, but moving, transition-wise, what happens for the interim? The barricades come out, you're not going to be able to keep the tables out. So the day the the barricades go away, you got to have everything out already, and then where do you put everything? So the storage. I think it's, besides the fact that this didn't go procedurally the way it probably should have, I still think it's good to extend it. And I do think we should wait till February, the first meeting in February because of knowing what's going to be on the January eighteenth agenda. And I do support the minimum ninety days, I think is fine. But the restaurants need to understand this transition. They need to be very clear when the temporary ends, there's going to be several months till we, if and when there is a permanent program. So that this doesn't become a shock or a controversial issue later. So I'm big on pre-planning, but I do support this. The outdoor dining has helped a lot of restaurants. I have been out to restaurants, there's a lot of people inside eating, hanging out, standing in line, but not everybody feels that comfortable going inside. And with the heightened situation this last week, with Omicron and everything else shutting down, I think it's only appropriate that we reconsider. Yes, we made a prior decision, but it was based on us coming back in December, having a plan for permanent. And now we have Omicron to be factored into this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, two things. City manager, I think the agenda for the January eighteenth meeting goes to the public on January thirteenth, I think. And that would be the Thursday before. And you are back, or staff is back on the third. So there's ten days. Is that sufficient time to prepare the parklet discussion that goes from, you know, permanent, including temporary with transition or a decision to end it? Can we, can we get a thorough report in that ten days?
If I may add to that question, we're having at least one housing element study session during that same time period, and all of that goes through the planning department.
Clearly, it's a heavy lift with, with everything we're trying to do. We'll be prepared for the eighteenth if the council wants to move forward. But having more time in light of the discussion this evening will allow us to bolster that report a little bit. I think we weren't intending to deal with, to transition directly, because I think it was, at least in the initial discussions, it was never intended that these parklets would transition to a permanent parklet, that these would end, there would be a period of time. And if there was a new parklet program, that would be sometime off in the future. So it wasn't something we anticipated, and it is worked into our analysis yet, so we would still have to add that. So it is a heavy lift. If the council continues a period of time, I would suggest that we provided more time to do that analysis.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not saying for certain that there has to be an exact, no missing days. I mean, some transition might include storage of that's part of what you, what you have to present us with options. I prefer to have it sooner only because we're going to have follow-ups to that meeting, and we have to have follow-ups. If we do ninety days, we have to have follow-ups and pretty much know what we're doing early enough in March to let the businesses know what they need to do. So if it's doable on the eighteenth, I prefer it, but I'll leave that to you. And, oh, my other, my other one was just a comment, you know, I'll say again, I'm uncomfortable with how we're here, but we're here, and it's before us. And given that, I'm going to err on the side of supporting the businesses. I mean, I, I, I think that the downs, if in fact they need this to downside, we don't do it, is worse than the upside, we do it. It isn't used a lot because of the weather, and the city frankly loses a few thousand dollars per month for rental of, of concrete barriers and all that. So I'll support the ninety days. And then if we can do the eighteenth, I would prefer it, but you know, you tell us. I'd rather have, I'd rather, I certainly want it to be thorough and to be.
Yeah, and I think our expectation of the eighteenth was a beginning of discussion of the permit. We didn't anticipate to have all the answers, but begin the dialogue. So I would anticipate there would be.
I imagine it's a multi, it's a multi-meeting. I imagine it's a multi, it's a multi-meeting discussion, right? To at least two, maybe three. So I would rather kick, personally, I'd like to kick it off on the, on the eighteenth.
Well, we're prepared to do so and we'll try to add some data on transition if that's what the council wants.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
I, I'll just say on the date, I, I would personally be fine with, with February. I, I realize we have a lot of other very important and time sensitive issues coming, coming before us in, in that, that time. But I, I understand the urgency and, you know, I, I agree with what the vice mayor probably says about the, the process. I, I just want to make one comment, which is that I also want to recognize the tough position that, that staff has been put in. And this speaks to some of the concerns about the process and, and transparency. And, and it's, it's tough to go out to businesses and say we're, we're going to be doing one thing and then a, a couple of days later to, to have that, that change. And so unfortunate that staff has been on, on that position. Appreciate all the hard work that's gone into all, all the research and into this process. Thank you.
So I'll just offer that. I do think we follow process, but it's clearly that, that's not a consistent opinion. So I will apologize. But if I have encouraged the, the staff to move forward with an issue that I thought I had vetted properly to bring it because COVID does allow us to do emergency meetings in twenty-four hours notice. So it recognizes that we may be put in these type of positions. And over the weekend, Dr. Fauci made a statement on national television that things are going to get a lot worse through the month of, remaining month of Jan, December and January. And Randy's in, in his note to us that he's already lost the clients for the Sharks and some of the, all the sports venues are shutting down and there's other things happening in specifically in here. So it's not, I would simply say that my assessment of the situation was not speculation. It was based on tangible information that the situation is getting worse and puts our businesses at greater risk. So I do not know exactly how the conversations went to establish the meeting this evening. It was my understanding that we did it all according to process and within the appropriate urgency ordinance of twenty-four hours. So there was no intent to not be transparent or not involve people. And so I apologize if people feel, feel that way. I certainly agree that we don't want to second guess decisions. But we're in a whole lot of hurt world and our job is to take action. So that was the reason this happened. It's no, no problem having lessons learned. No problems. So I'm also supportive of the ninety days. I'm perfectly willing to do that. So if there's a consensus or further discussion or a motion, yes, please.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll move that the city council adopt the resolution extending the downtown Campbell Parkland program for outdoor restaurant dining and business operations in Parkland through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
With the utilization of the desk item of the resolution.
Using the resolution as the desk item, yes.
I'll second that.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Item three of the resolution needs a date.
Yeah, those blank dates would, should be the March. Let me look at the resolution here. I'm sorry. That should be the March thirty-first date in all of those blanks in the resolution.
They were left blank till we decided how many. So you just need in your motion to.
I think they're all the same though, correct?
They would all be the same date.
So using March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two in the resolution for the extension date, the expanded outdoor dining date and the date beyond which staff shall start removing safety barriers and trees.
I accept that amendment to my second.
Is that a, is that your question? Okay, please. Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Thank you all. And we will adjourn this meeting to our regularly scheduled council meeting at seven-thirty this evening. And does the link?
Yeah, does the link stay?
It's the same link.
It's the same link. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Campbell City Council. To protect our constituents, city officials, and city staff, the city reminds us all in attendance that physical distancing and face covering is required. I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act. This council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Here.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we have special presentation and proclamations. We have a request from Councilwoman Landry.
May I ask all council members to please stand?
And tap these down. Don't open it till I say to you. Okay, are you ready, Brian? Okay, hold it sideways like this. It's worth the rub, this off. Open the side up. And when I say three, pull on the ribbon. One, two, three.
Not sure if you got it all.
I think Sergio got it done. Happy Christmas and happy new year to everybody. I hope that you enjoy my card.
Cheers, thank you. Happy New Year, thank you. As always, cleverness is your middle name. Thank you. Yes, you make them all from scratch.
Okay, I cannot take credit for the design. I was up at 2:00 in the morning and they had a thing on HSN that said exploding Christmas card. You know, I had to dive into that, right? So it's, I made them but didn't design them.
Very nice, thank you so much. All right. At this portion of the meeting, we also have communications and petitions. And under communications, we had a special meeting on Monday evening, executive session, and there is nothing to report out from that meeting. Oral requests. Note that this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on any item not on the tonight's agenda? Seeing none in the audience, do we have anyone on Zoom call? I have no hands raised. No hands raised, thank you. None of those who signed up are online with us. Thank you for that. All right, we will now move on to the mayor's announcements. And I want you to take note, I remembered them. With the holidays approaching, the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department recommends that all eligible members of the public who live or work in Santa Clara County receive a COVID-19 booster shot. The booster shot is appropriate for almost everyone, and I believe it's now down to age 16 and up and older, six months following the last Pfizer or Moderna vaccination or two months following the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. County clinics are taking appointments at www.freevax, SCCfreevax.org, and many locations already accept walk-in patients for the booster shots. Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are available within the county. Additionally, many doctors' offices and pharmacies provide COVID-19 boosters. The Campbell Heritage Theater is pleased to present Marshall Charloff and the Purple Experience on Friday, February 25th, 2020, and the Peninsula Symphony Orchestra featuring Joe John Nakamatsu on Saturday, February 26th, 2022. For events and ticket information, please visit City of Campbell website at campbellca.gov. City Hall offices will be closed for business beginning Thursday, December 23rd through Friday, December 31st. Police and emergency services will remain open. At this time, we will go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? This is items one through four.
Mayor Gibbons, your video is off.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll go back, is there anyone wishing to withdraw a comment on the consent calendar? Or Chair will take the motion.
I'll move consent items one through four.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Bybee, second. May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Thank you very much. There are no public hearings or introduction of ordinance. We will now go to new business of the evening. This is the city council reorganization, the recommended action that the city council reorganize and elect a mayor and vice mayor for 2022. At this time, I have an opportunity to recognize our dignitaries that are in attendance. There will be an opportunity for them to speak at various points in the meeting if they so choose. So we have with us Assembly Member Evan Low and we have foothold the answer of President. It'll come to me.
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees. Yeah, your first name, Patrick. I couldn't get the hat, Patrick Ahern, thank you. Too much going on tonight, Patrick, forgive me. All right.
Online, I have a line on two, we have former Mayor Christina.
Okay, and online, we have former Mayor Christina. Do we have anyone else online? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. And let's see. So.
So at this time, Mayor, if I, if I may, let me, I have a presentation for you. That I think we can do up here is okay? And this is a, this is a plaque to recognize your services, Mayor, from December 2020 through December 2021, it says to Elizabeth Gibbons in recognition of services, Mayor. And let me, let me present this to you.
We need our out.
We're out of, we're out of our video, but we'll be back. And I'll say that for the people up here who have done this job, this is tougher to do to participate in a meeting and also to run the meeting. And more so with the restrictions we have with COVID and even more so when we went to a hybrid meeting where you're running a meeting and you're watching Zoom and you're handling people in person and, and others, of course, are watching on YouTube. So it's not a small task to transition from a normal meeting to totally remote and then to hybrid. So thank you for your work in, in this year of doing that. I guess seemingly we're going to continue hybrid for quite a while and probably continue Zoom even after that. So it's a good transition for the future. But thank you for your work in doing that. I think everybody, as they get up here, rises, you're juggling a lot of, a lot of balls at the time to try to get all this done. And thank you for your, your service for the year.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Resnikov, for the moment. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to those who are joining us this evening for this important decision, the election of the mayor and vice mayor for 2022. This past weekend, I listened to a poem that was set to music. I heard it as a reflection of this past year. Let us care for the children, for they got a long way to go. Let us care for the elders, for they've come a long way. Let us care for those in the middle, for they're doing the work. People everywhere, I think particularly in Campbell, have stepped up to care. I'll offer a special thanks to my loved ones, the children, Spencer and Declan, Max and Leo, to the elders, well, mostly elders, Joanna and Rudy, Sharon and Steve, Stephen, Paula and Ed, Paula and Warren, Mary Lynn, Savito, Mariko, Emily, Monty, Russ, and Paula again, there are three Paulas, my invaluable friends and sounding boards, to those in the middle working to keep us together. Of particular importance to me, to, it is of particular importance to me to thank those who are working to save our planet. In 2021, Silicon Valley Clean Energy has reduced Campbell's electric-related carbon emissions by 96%. That's over 29 million pounds just in this past 12 months, provided over $400,000 on on-bill savings, nearly $4 million in, since April of 2016. Silicon Valley Clean Energy has contracted for 1.6 billion in new power generation facilities with a capacity of 750 megawatts and 175 megawatts of battery storage. There are many programs and grants to assist homeowners and businesses to become energy efficient. It is important to thank those who have continued to volunteer in our community, keeping our boards and commissions running, the library open in its special new location at the community center, Campbell Cert constantly training, ready to assist, the Kiwanis, the Rotary, the Lions, and the ever-committed Campbell Chamber of Commerce, the DCBA, and many wonderful Campbell foundations, the continued engagement of neighborhood associations. I'd like to say a special thank you to my colleagues for working together to balance a severe budget shortfall. Remember, that was only in February. Breaking the rules to keep our businesses open, opening an all-inclusive playground at J.D. Morgan Park, taking on redistricting from the 2020 census, and managing the COVID impacts throughout our community for a second year. Thank you to the staff, always working, providing newly refurbished roads, clean streets and parks, maintaining Campbell's heritage at the Ainsley House and Historical Museum, as well as keeping the theater ready for a new year of culture and community events. Moving energetically on a dialogue with the community for affordable housing, protecting our community, and perhaps most notably, keeping Campbell's parks and recreation activities functioning while we were all so desperately needing to get out of the house. I leave it to others to decide who qualifies as children, seniors, or in the middle. Thank you all very much. My pleasure to have been your mayor this year.
Are we allowed to say things? Okay.
Okay, so I believe at this time, I will do the honor of asking for nominations for Mayor for the 20, Campbell 2022. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Vice Mayor Resnikov to the office of Mayor.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilmember Bybee and a second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
And with that, I will ask for the new mayor, Mayor Resnikov, to take over the gavel.
Thank you very much, thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
And any remarks that you would like to?
Yes, I'll, yeah, thank you. So I want to thank, oh, thank you, Brian. I thank my fellow council members, first of all, for your votes tonight and for support during the coming year. Yep, and a big thank you to staff for all you do. And we set the direction, but nothing gets done without all the work you're doing and the hard work. So thank you so much. And thanks to those in attendance tonight, in person, online, I have family members online. It's so different experience from where we were four years ago because remote logins were unheard of, and now we have people on Zoom and on YouTube. But I appreciate your participation, especially, like I say, family on the East Coast, it's a late hour there, so I appreciate very much. I know my, my sister and my nephew are watching right as we speak, so thank you. I'll, I'll be, I'll be really brief, and I know there's always skeptics every time I say that. But, but yeah, I worked hard to get my voice back, so I'm gonna use it. It was hard to believe, I'm starting year eight on council, and that's following eight years as a commissioner. And at times, it's been, it's been productive, it's been challenging, it's been frustrating, but overall, it's really very rewarding. In the past seven years here, we've kept Campbell a safe community. We've maintained a fiscally strong city. We've added badly needed market and below-market housing. We've added to and upgraded our parks and playground facilities. And we've taken care of so many issues that aren't as visible but are, but are a little And we've taken care of so many issues that aren't as visible but are, but are literally essential to running the city. And we know change is inevitable, change is scary, but as we've grown, we've really managed to keep the small-town atmosphere that we always talk about. I think that this coming year will be no different, though with the continued and added challenges of COVID and an aggressive state mandate on housing growth. But with, I think, the support of everybody here, I look forward to addressing these and other issues effectively and efficiently while keeping Campbell safe, financially sound, and a great place to live, work, and visit. So I appreciate this, this honor. I thank you again. It is an honor to serve another term as mayor, particularly as this is the closing chapter to my, to my tenure here. It's hard to believe how fast it's gone, and Councilmember Gibbons knows that exactly well, as we started the same time. So again, thank you so much. I appreciate it very much. Look forward to the next year. And I think now we're going to move on to the selection of vice mayor. Am I missing?
When do we get to say?
Oh, yes, I have it. Oh, thank you, you handed me an agenda. Yes, thank you, City Clerk's office gave me an agenda, so I appreciate it. Move on to the nomination of vice mayor. Is there a nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to be honored to nominate Ann Bybee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So nomination and a second. Can we, any other nominations? We have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
So congratulations, I'll be the first vice mayor, Bybee. So if you would like to make any comments?
Thank you. I just, we'll keep it short. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for selecting me as vice mayor. I understand and appreciate the honor and looking forward to the opportunity to serve in this capacity. And I also am looking forward to working with each of you on our major projects, the, the Measure O and the housing element and the general plan update. And I also want to thank the city staff, acknowledge the city manager and executive team, and all the staff for the work that they've done, especially the ones that work behind the scenes and do it day-to-day and keep our city the fine city that it is. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And we're going to open up the public. Before we do that, I just wanted to comment on two things. In the past, we sometimes done a swearing-in, which is ceremonial, but in deference with COVID and not really being open, we decided not to do that. We also normally have a reception, but again, we don't have a lot of people attending, and it didn't seem right with the distancing requirement. So my thought and the vice mayor's thought was when, when the restrictions are lifted, or more likely, when we just get warmer weather in the spring, we could do a reception outside for the public, maybe before meeting, six o'clock, six-thirty or something like that, to allow the public to come and meet the council members and then attend the meeting if they want, or, or not attend the meeting if they want. So look forward to that, hopefully, in the, in next few months. We're going to go to comments from the public and we'll take in person first. So is there anybody from the public sitting in our audience that would like to speak? Nobody. I could name all of you. Going once? Going twice? Okay, that's quite all right. Let's go, we'll go online. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? I see a hand for former mayor Jeff Christina. Can we unmute Jeff? Jeff, you're unmuted?
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Well, I just really wanted to congratulate you today and.
A little louder, if you may?
What, I'm sorry?
Could you be a little, or just go a little louder?
Oh, sorry. It's kind of hard to hear out here. It's a little loud. I wanted to congratulate you with some fireworks, even though you can't see them. Hopefully, you can hear them, and they're beautiful, and they're hopefully going to be as beautiful as next year in Campbell. It's underneath here, guidance.
I don't know what it is, but you got the noise in the background. It could be, let's get those fireworks for us, thank you. We'll leave it at that. How's that?
You're welcome. Have a great one.
Thank you, Jeff. Never a dull moment. It's from the last years, remember, we should have expected it. Is there anybody else, City Clerk, that wants to speak? I don't think so.
I don't have any other hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. So in that case. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I opened up to the council. Thank you very much.
We don't get to say anything?
That's what we do.
All right, I just, I want to thank Liz. My first time being mayor was when COVID hit, so I had no other experience to say it was different. You had the chance to be mayor before, and so you knew what was different. I think you really did well throughout the year with all the things that we were faced with between our budget deficits and dealing with COVID, dealing with parklets, doing with all the other city business. I think you've done a good job, and I look forward to a continued year of all of us being together. And congratulations, Paul and Ann. I look forward to this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I'd like to thank our outgoing, you know, it was weird to hear Councilmember Gibbons threw me off for a second. But want to congratulate you and thank you for your, your service during this difficult time. You can look back and be proud of all that we accomplished and you accomplished during this time. So, so thank you so much, and what a wealth of experience and history of the city we, we have, both outgoing and going into the next year. So congratulations, Mayor Paul Resnikov and Vice Mayor Ann Bybee. Looking forward to serving with you.
Thank you. And the titles are weird. The first year we were here, we, we kept calling each other Commissioner. It was Christian for about a year. And Vice Mayor?
I also want to acknowledge your service, Liz, as mayor and keeping everyone on track this year. I know it's been a challenging year with lots of ups and downs, but appreciate your efficiency and, and keeping us on the straight and narrow. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you for all the nice words, but I also wanted to thank Vice Mayor, now Mayor Resnikov, because it takes a whole council and also a strong mayor and vice mayor to help keep things moving and keep making sure I remember to say everything that is on the agenda. And so thank you for helping make last year's success. And congratulations to both of you. I look forward to having, serving on the council with your leadership.
Thank you so much. I echo the comments made. So thank you so much. We don't, we have a really short agenda here, so hang in with us. We have item six, the two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting schedule. And I think we have the city clerk who's going to present.
Just a brief introduction. So the item for you tonight is the draft resolution in two thousand and twenty-two meeting schedule. You'll notice there's an exhibit to the resolution, the dates are laid out. And the asterisks represent dates that are canceled, like January fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, you canceled during last, last year's vote. And there's precedent for canceling July fifth, August second, and then the January first meeting in January two thousand and twenty-three. However, if you would like to cancel those dates in two thousand and twenty-two, you need to have that included in your motion. So with that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, open to the public, anybody publicly to address the council? Seeing none. Bring it back to council discussions on the schedule.
If there's no discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, council member, oh, Vice Mayor Bybee.
I would like to ask for consideration of canceling the second meeting in July rather than the first meeting in July. Many cities, well, for, for planning purposes, I think it's, it's more efficient that we have the first meeting and then take a break. As many other cities in the county do, they, they go dark the month of July, and it just makes more sense to have a break, have a meeting at the beginning and then have a break for the full month of July.
Follow-up question? On the list that the city clerk read, the August second meeting is asterisk of whether we want to keep that, that's usually national night out.
Right.
So if we don't, if we have the first meeting in July, and then we would not have it until the third week of August.
No, if I can comment, because we haven't canceled the August meeting. We, we've typically moved it to Monday. But I think also, we could, to me, we could wait to see if there is a national night out. But we also have another option, I don't think we've ever done, is if it's a later agenda, we can also move it back an hour, maybe, or a half hour and enable everybody to go. This year, actually, we, we, we kept it on the same day and, and still covered it. So I think that that can probably be done then, but we, I don't believe we've ever can. Few years ago, we might have canceled it, not canceled on July one.
Okay, well, she made a comment about the August second meeting with the asterisk meaning it would be canceled, so I'm responding to that.
Cancelled or, or adjusted to accommodate holidays or special community events and things of that nature. So I'm sorry if I misspoke.
So I support the first July meeting instead of canceling, and then we leave the August open till determined in the future.
Okay, Councilmember Gibbons?
I'm sorry, did you support keeping the first meeting in July or keeping the off date?
I'm supporting what council, where Vice Mayor Bybee said to have the first meeting in July and then have a break for a month, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll go with what people want. I like having the first meeting off because most of my boards are, depending on what happened, that they have the first meeting in July off. They always take the week, meetings of the first two weeks of July off.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
I'm, I'm fine with the suggestion the Vice Mayor made.
Okay, as am I. City manager, I can ask you, does July fifth present any problems? I think the holiday is a Monday, so that's Tuesday, so it's really just a three-day weekend. So you're working Friday and it's just coming back to the meeting day. Okay. I'm, I'm supportive if, if the Vice Mayor prefers the nineteenth off, that's okay. It does give us, we, we normally never have three, four, four weeks in a row, so it has a benefit. So, any other comments or? Is there a motion?
Just one point of clarification, we would need to decide the January third, two thousand and twenty-three as well. So if you could speak to that date.
Yeah, and we've always taken off the first meeting in January. Is there any discussion or concern about that? Motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand and twenty-two calendar with the cancellation of the second meeting in July and leaving the August meeting optional or, or flexible for scheduling in case of national night out and, and canceling the January third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no unfinished business. Unless somebody has something urgent, we were going to skip the council committee reports. No objections, it seems. So in that case, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled council meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy holidays, everybody, happy new year.
When are we going to have the?